Members, this session is about public finance. I will first ask Mr. Christopher Hui, Secretary for Financial Services and the Treasury, to give us an opening remarks. Members who would like to put questions, please press the button now. Mr. Hui, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. This session of the Special Meetings of the Finance Committee will discuss the expenditure estimates of the Treasury Branch and the related departments, as well as the key work of the Treasury Branch in two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. I will brief members on these two aspects. Afterwards, I will take questions from members. The estimated total expenditure of the Treasury Branch and the Departments under its purview for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six is about ten point five three seven billion dollars, a decrease of five hundred and twenty million dollars, about four point seven percent over the original estimate of eleven point zero five seven billion dollars for the last year. This is mainly attributed to a decrease of seven hundred million dollars in the estimated non-recurring expenditure of the Treasury Branch for items such as electricity charges subsidy scheme and consumption voucher scheme over the estimate for last year. Discounting the non-recurring expenditure, the estimated total recurrent expenditure of the Treasury Branch and the Departments under its purview this year is nine point nine seven three billion dollars, an increase of one hundred and sixty million dollars, about one point six percent over the original estimate for last year. On key areas of work, to implement the proposals of the budget, the Treasury Branch will focus on the following five major tasks in the coming year. First, we will, together with other bureaus and departments, implement the reinforced fiscal consolidation program proposed in the budget. The key is managing expenditure growth, making good use of and consolidating the government's fiscal resources, identifying new revenue sources. Second, in the past, bureaus and departments established funds outside the government's account for specific purposes in the light of their policy needs. The mode of operation of seed capital funds has resulted in the locking up of an enormous amount of public financial resources thereby limiting the government's flexibility and allocating resources to different policy areas according to the prevailing priority. To enable the government to make more flexible and effective use of public financial resources, we will first bring back six seat capital funds with a relatively large unspent balance totaling about sixty-one point five billion dollars to the government's account after sending aside resources to meet the necessary expenditure of relevant funds for the next five years so that their sustainable operation will not be affected. This will provide a more comprehensive picture of the government's fiscal position and enable better use of its financial resources. We consulted the Panel on Financial Affairs on the revised financial arrangements of the six-seat capital funds yesterday and plan to seek the approval of the Finance Committee on the twenty-fifth of April for allowing the direct use of the principles by the funds to meet their cash flow requirements to ensure their sustainable operation after the transfers of the balance. We have also requested relevant bureaus to review the policy objectives, financial arrangements, and so on of each of the other funds. The government will take into account the actual circumstances of the funds in considering whether to bring back any funds. We plan to complete the relevant review in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-six. We have submitted the relevant legislative proposals to the Legislative Council for scrutiny for implementing the one-off tax and rates concessions, the increase in the rate of air passenger departure tax, and the raise of the maximum value of properties chargeable to a stamp duty of a hundred dollars as proposed in the budget. We are also exploring the introduction of a boundary facilities fee on private cars departing via land boundary control points. On international taxation cooperation, in January two thousand twenty-five, the government submitted a bill to the Leshko on implementing the framework promulgated by the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development for imposing the global minimum tax of fifteen percent on large multinational enterprise groups with an annual consolidated revenue of seven hundred and fifty million euros or above, as well as launching the Hong Kong Minimum Top Up Tax. We are working actively to support the scrutiny of the bill's committee with a view to securing the passage of the bill by Leshko as soon as possible. The, on the fourth area of our work, the capital works expenditure of the government will start reaching its peak with progressive implementation of projects related to the Northern Metropolis and other infrastructure works projects relating to the economy and people's livelihood. To ensure these strategic infrastructure works projects can proceed on schedule and deliver early benefits to the economy and the public, we will issue about a hundred and fifty billion dollars' worth of government bonds in the coming year to raise capital and increase the borrowing ceiling of government bond programs to seven hundred billion dollars. The ratio of government debt to GDP will stay at twelve to sixteen point five percent, which is a prudent and manageable level and is much lower than most of the advanced economies. The proceeds from bond issuance will not only used to invest in infrastructures, but not for funding government recurrent expenditure. Fifth, to assist bureaus and departments in ensuring the proper use of public money, the Financial Services and the Treasury Bureau and the Government Logistics Department are reviewing the government's procurement regime with a view to facilitating departments to procure quality goods and services at a reasonable price through an open and fair framework. The review will focus on promoting more precise use of resources by bureaus and departments and enhancing cost effectiveness of procurement via suitably dedicating power to bureaus and departments. Streamlining procedures, adjusting evaluation criteria, and increasing flexibility for procurement. We expect to introduce the new arrangement in mid-two thousand twenty-five. Chairman, my colleagues and I will be happy to answer any questions from members. Thank you. We have only thirty-four minutes left for this session. Fifteen members have pressed the button. I believe that only eight members will be able to put their questions. I will read out the names. Ms. Carmen Khan, Ms. Dorian Kong, Mr. Chairman Kong, Dr. Wendy Hong, Mr. Michael Tian, Mr. Lu Chong Hong, Mr. Tang Kapiu. The eighth member is Mr. Edmund Wong. Dr. Johnny Ng, we'll see if you have the opportunity to speak. Ms. Carmen Khan, please restrict your question and answers within four minutes. I'd like to ask about zero point, uh, zero eight five and zero eight six. That's the number of reply. The secretary talked about the six-seats capital funds, and we've talked about this in the Panel on Financial Affairs meeting. In the sixty-two billion dollars that is about to be clawed back from the Education Bureau and the Hospital Authority, fifty-two point eight billion dollars is involved in the Education Bureau funds. Regarding the research fund, it, there is eleven billion dollars. The government said that they have looked at the cash flow in the coming five years for these funds. In the panel, the administration said that they will review it further in two thousand and twenty-eight. I wonder what mechanism we're going to invoke in two thousand twenty-eight. Education, technology, and talents are important. Is there any ways for us to inject funds into the seed capital fund if necessary? In reply number eighty-six, it is said that we have to repay some five hundred and seven billion dollars to the bond investors. How did you come up with the figure of two hundred and thirty-four point five billion dollars that is about to be matured in the coming five years? Because this bond has not been issued yet. Does the government have any plan to issue short-term bond? Why don't you issue medium-to-long-term bond to meet our infrastructure in the Northern Metropolis? Secretary. In the meeting of the F A P yesterday, I've answered the same question. We offer financial support to different bureaus and departments so that they can fulfill their responsibilities. In the past, we use this, well, the six-seat capital funds to support different bureaus and departments, but a lot, large amount of funds will be locked up because of the fund. Now, the bureaus and departments can ask the administration to inject funds into their respective policy areas instead of the administration injecting funds into the seed capital funds. We bring back the six-seats capital funds, and that will not affect the work of the Education Bureau and the Health Bureau. So members can rest assured. For policy areas that have to do with livelihood and development, we will allocate resources when necessary. In five-year time, we're going to review it further. Mr. Li, Permanent Secretary, please. Ms. Khan asked about issuance of bond. In the next five years, we have to repay some five hundred billion dollars of bond. We have taken into account bonds that have not been issued yet. We based our estimates on the previous issuance for retail and silver bonds. They are usually of three-year tenor. If we are going to issue silver bonds in the coming years, it will be matured within three years. We have been working with the Hong Kong M A to see if we should issue bonds with a longer tenure so that we don't have to repay so much money in a short term, uh, short period of time. Ms. Dorian Kong. Thank you. I'd like to ask about zero zero five on the combating illicit cigarette activities. That's a question put by Mr. Edward Leng. I see that the compound amount and the jail term handed down were not heavy. The compound amount to some just one hundred to sixty thousand dollars, jail term a hundred and forty days. But previously, we have been jailing people for some two to seven years or handing down a fine of one to two million dollars. I wonder if the administration will look into ways to enhance the deterrent effect of our penalty. I also like to ask about zero zero nine, reply number. That's about government property agency. For preferences that don't have a purpose or vacant, the G L D said that they don't have the relevant information. I wonder why that is? How come the G P A does not have the figures on the amount of money that we spend on maintenance? I also like to ask about zero two zero on the chatbot developed by I R D. There is deficiencies in Iris. I've talked to Iris, the chatbot. Regardless of my question, the chatbot gave, gave me the same answer in Chinese. If I put questions in English, the answer is even worse. How can we make the chatbot better? I will ask the head of the relevant departments to take the question. First, Director Commissioner of Customs and Exis, thank you. On the penalty of violation of contraband-related regulations, the administration has been looking into adopting different measures to enhance deterrent effect by increasing the fine for purchasing, storage of duty-not-paid cigarettes. Currently, this is, there is a fine of one million dollars to two years of imprisonment. We will increase the penalty to conviction on, um, well, to a fine of two million dollars and imprisonment of seven years. The relevant policy bureaus also proposed to increase the compounding from two thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. The legislation has not been passed yet. The member talked about the light fine handed down by the court as low as a hundred dollars to say a few tens of thousand dollars. We have noticed this situation. Uh, the penalty to be handed down by the court is under the purview of the judiciary. We have been talking to the judiciary about our concern and for people who bring illicit cigarettes, well, duty-not-paid cigarettes from the boundary control points. Some of them refuse to pay a fine and have the case brought to the court. And we will reflect the situation in the court in the trial so that the court will hand down a heavier fine. We hope that the fine handed down by the court will not be lower than that handed down at the boundary control point.
For the questions for the G P A and the I R D, I believe the reply will have to be in written form to be fair to other members. Professor Chairman Kong, thank you. I would like to follow up on two questions. Zero four seven and one zero zero. About boundary facilities fee. I note that the replies given were very simple. They are just saying that the details will be announced in due course. We are always concerned whenever we introduce a new tax, whether the costs will outweigh the benefits. I actually mentioned this before at a previous meeting. Every year, we have five million vehicles departing from Hong Kong via land, and it will bring about one billion dollars in revenue. How did the government derive this figure for the five million vehicles? I believe they included the vehicles entering Hong Kong as well. And if they are to charge boundary facilities fee, that will impede the exchanges between the two sides. And we are saying that we won't pay from the port fees, right? So is it the case that they are retreating from charging boundary facilities fees now with this reply? Thank you. Permanent Secretary. Thank you. The F S T B is only starting the study recently. And when we talk about making use of existing manpower to conduct a study, that's indeed the reply that we gave. And we are talking about char, having one billion dollars in revenue. We're talking about ten billion vehicles departing and entering Hong Kong. So we have halved it to be five billion dollars. And if we are charged two hundred dollars, it would mean for one billion dollars in revenue. But this is just a preliminary idea. We need to liaise with different departments. We need to flash out the mechanism, whether there will be exemptions, how we are going to charge the fee. After we have the details, we will consult the council. Well, which bureau proposes this? I want to know. I think the members of the public also would like to know who is so smart to have proposed this idea. I'm not sure if Mr. Li can disclose this. Well, generally, for measures to develop new sources of revenue, in general, it would be proposed by the F S T B. I'm glad that the Permanent Secretary is so honest, but I think the society is worried that the costs would outweigh the pros. Thank you. Dr. Wendy Hong, I would like to ask about zero six eight and zero six nine. We have been talking about implementing the fiscal consolidation program, and we are to cut one percent in expenditure. And in the next few years, we will cut two percent in expenditure. But I refute the recurrent expenditure of the government. Every year, we had an increase of four percent. In two thousand twenty-four, we had an increase of three percent. And after that, we had an increase of four point five percent. So you are saying that you are going to cut the expenditure, but you actually had an increase in recurrent expenditure. Does that mean we are failing at cutting expenditure? So how can you show the public that we are effectively cutting expenditure? We are going to issue more bonds to support the future work of the government. I do understand that, but then we have to repay debts. Right now, we have fifty billion dollars that are being used to repay debts. And it is said that for the three to five years, sixty to seventy percent of such would be used for repaying debts. So if we look forward, say, in six to ten years, the ratio will be even higher unless we issue even more bonds. So are we going into a vicious cycle where we are repaying debts with the issuance of bonds? How did the country deal with this? I also want to ask about zero nine six. About top talent pass scheme, talents. How are, how is the tax situation for the talents? And the I R D said they do not have the relevant information. Should we collect relevant information to gauge the contributions made by talents to the society of Hong Kong? Thank you. Mr. Andrew Li, Permanent Secretary. Thank you. On recurrent expenditure, the first question of Dr. Wendy Hong. We have an expenditure approximately eight hundred billion dollars. But if we are to cut two percent in expenditure per year, in some, it would be approximately four hundred billion dollars. Why is that? Because we have a public works expenditure a hundred to two hundred billions that will not be affected, as well as social welfare expenditure for old age living allowance and C S S A, they will not be cut as well. So only in total, approximately four hundred billion dollars will be subject to the cut, the two percent cut in government expenditure, half of which will be subject to the two percent cut in expenditure essentially. But for the items that are not cut, say, for civil service pension fund as well as old age living allowance, there will be an increase as we have more recipients or as we have inflation. We all also have some new allowances that will be new costs. So we are trying to lower the operating expenditure in the sense that we will be able to achieve the cut. As for the issuance of bonds, most of them are short-term bonds. If we are to issue bonds to support public works projects, and public works projects usually last for, say, at least five years or for larger-scale projects, that would be at least eight or ten years. We believe we should issue long-term bonds to better support these projects. So this is direction that we are going to take. As for the I R D question, we will provide written reply. Well, I guess they need to take some time to answer that question. Mr. Michael Tian, I want to ask about zero zero five. How much do we need sixty, zero six five? How much do we have to issue in bonds to support the project in Northern Metropolis? If we are to adopt a P P P model, we will need to issue even more bonds. And the highways department will be able to shoulder seventy percent of the infrastructure costs. And the M T R C can shoulder the thirty percent. It would be much more efficient. I think it is the bu, model that the Buildings Department is adopting, so it is probably more ideal. So will we be constructing railway projects with a P P P model? If we only rely on issuing bonds, it will be a vicious cycle. For example, the Northern Link is still stuck. It has not been submitted to the Executive Council for consideration. You are saying that we have a low debt to GDP ratio, just twelve to sixteen point five percent. But then if we look at the country, as you can see here, the sign that I'm displaying, China, it's ninety percent. The U S, one hundred and twenty, one percent. Japan, two hundred odd percent. And we are talking about three trillion dollars in GDP. That is a very low racial. If we have a trillion dollars in debt, it will still be seen as a low debt to GDP ratio. Do you confirm this to be the case? I also want about, want to ask about zero five five and zero seven seven. So these are questions about geopolitics and interest rates. So the Donald, what Donald Trump has been doing is to try to lower interest rates. And we have seen the ten-year yield curve in the U S is now dropping. So is it the case that we expect there is a high chance in the next six to nine months, the U S would have to lower their interest rates? And as Hong Kong has a linked system with the U S dollars, we would also have to say goodbye to high interest rates. Thank you. Secretary. Thank you. The members' first question is on financing model of projects in Northern Metropolis. We are still looking into different options, so we do not have any concrete details at the moment. As for the debt to GDP ratio, as said in the replies in two twenty-nine, twenty, no, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, it would still be sixteen point five percent only. So we are still having a relatively low debt to GDP ratio, which is why we proposed issuing more bonds. The member's third question was, it was, uh, the future trend of interest rates. I think there are a number of factors at play. We need to think about whether the U S will lower interest rates. That is, of course, one factor. But then we have also seen tariffs that will push the inflation higher. There are also some restrictions, say, population. As, so that whether we will actually see a decline in interest rates, I think there are a number of factors at play. We should just focus on what we have. We should have regard to our financial situation and our debt levels and manage our operating and capital expenditure. Thank you. Mr. Lu Chong Hong, I would like to follow up on two questions. Zero nine five, a question by Mr. Tang Kapiu on the procurement by the government of electric vehicles. And we had recently some really lot, big news. We have LEAF, a Japanese brand that is now a largest seller, but we only have one hundred of such vehicles in Hong Kong. And, and this is an unpopular model that is ironically the, what the government has been buying the most. We have the government purchasing seventy-eight vehicles. It is eighty percent of such vehicles sold in Hong Kong. So this Japanese vehicle, LEAF, it only has forty kilowatt per hour in power and in N E C standards. It would only run for three hundred and eleven kilometers. And if we take seventy percent, it would just be two hundred odd kilometers as a public vehicle. The biggest buyer out of government departments would be Water Supplies Department. Often, they have to travel far. This vehicle may not even support their work for one day. Will the cars break down? I'm worried about that. And the procurement price is two hundred and seventy-four thousand, and we will not see any tax exemptions by the, for the government. We have seen really good mainland Chinese electric vehicles. We have many mainland vehicles with sixty kilowatt per hour. And there are many different models for selection. Say, Dolphin from B Y D, they are only costing, say, two hundred thousand dollars. They are also small models with five doors, just like LEAF. Did we have any tendering for the vehicles? Can you disclose the tendering details if you have issued tender documents? What is the tendering criteria? How many of the contractors actually bid it for the project? And what are the advantages of LEAF exactly? I think you need to explain this because otherwise, I think we may need to have some follow-up investigations.
Mr. Chan will take the question. When the government procure vehicles, we adopt a open tendering approach. We work with the E M S D on the procurement criteria and the requirements, such as the driving range, the size of the body of the car, and the horsepower. We ask different departments what their requirements are before we formulate the procurement criteria.
We ask different departments what their requirements are before we formulate the procurement criteria. As to why. Some brands won many procurement exercises back in the years. We look at the return tenders. If their price. Is the lowest and if they score the highest technical marks, then the tenders would win. The bit. As to why a certain type of vehicle won so many bits at a certain year, there are various factors to it. We invite. Manufacturers with the suitable models to submit their tenders. As to whether they submit a tender is their own business decision. Our tender exercise have all along been open and transparent. I have some concrete questions. I'll ask the administration to give me a written reply. Mister Chan, please reply in writing. Mister Chan will give you a concrete reply in his written submissions. Thank you. Mister Tang Happy. Thank you. I have another question. Because Lu Chenghong used my quota to ask about electric vehicles, which he is very much concerned about. I'd like to follow up on zero six zero. That's the question put by Mister Kingsley Wong about outsourced contractors. It's about the departments who have hired many contractors and the median wage for non skilled workers. Now median wage is sixty two dollars per hour. Times eight hours, times thirty days. It means that the non technical or non skilled workers will enjoy a monthly salary of fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Not taking into account the MPF contributions. For civil servants at pay scale zero, the salary is fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. So this median committed hourly wage for non technical workers is fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. For civil servants at pay scale zero is receive a monthly salary of fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty. So a contractors enjoy a higher salary than that of the civil servants. In terms of financial sustainability. Well, it would be difficult for us to ask you to hire more civil servants because you have committed to cut one ten thousand positions from the civil service. Can we save money by lowering the wage of say our outsourced workers? That's questionable. In the mainland, there are many public bodies. Or municipal organizations. They have set up companies with a government background. They are not government departments. They hire. Workers over the long term. Should we make reference to their practice? Apart from outsourcing some of the duties to their contractors. Should we ask some municipal organizations to set up a company to hire non skilled workers over the long term so that. We don't have to. Procure for contractors once every few years. Thank you, secretary. The members come from. Good intent. The member wants the government to. Enhance the remuneration that we offer to the outsourced workers. And the median committed hourly wage that we have today is the result of our efforts. We've been trying to take into account the interest of the outsourced workers. When we conduct our tender exercise. Our target is very clear. We want to. Improve the benefits offered to the outsourced workers. The median committed hourly wage reflects the results of our efforts over the years. The member suggested. Uh establishing companies supported by the government, which is going to hire workers over the long term. I think that we have to look into it to see whether it actually will be able to achieve our intended outcome. It may be feasible on paper. But when it's put into actual practice. There could be deficiencies. If we make such structural change, are we going to meet the demand of the workers or achieve our intended outcome? That's questionable, but I appreciate the members' suggestion. I think that the result of our efforts is reflected well. Well, we have less than four minutes left. So the last member to speak will Mr. Edmund Wong. Thank you. Chairman, I'd like to ask about reply twenty nine about e-tax filing. From twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, twenty five. The e-tax filing from companies ranged from zero point seven to one percent. So about five thousand five hundred companies have filed. Returns by electronic means for personal tax, some thirty four to some forty percent have filed a tax returns by electronic means. The demand notes have been issued this year, some two hundred and sixty thousand have been issued. We know that for multinational enterprises, they will be mandated to file their tax return electronically. And as at two thousand and twenty thirty, all enterprises will be mandated to file returns electronically. I wonder if there is any measures to help SME migrate to the new arrangement because. Tax practitioners, general members of the public and the enterprises. May refrain from filing taxes electronically because they don't want to make any mistakes. Thank you. That's my first question. Second, on individual tax returns. The administration has not set a KPI, say to mandate individuals to file tax returns electronically, but I think that. Filing tax return electronically is better than doing that on paper. So. Are we going to roll out measures to encourage that? I think that Mister Chan is going to take the question. Commissioner of inland revenue, please. On our support for SMEs for electronic e-tax return filing. The IRD have been offering support to enterprises. Especially for SMEs. We know that SMEs have limited resources. They need. More resources to file their tax return electronically. They need may need to procure new software. And they need time to adapt to the new arrangement. The IRD has developed a free of charge data migration software. That is offered to enterprises. All enterprises can make use of the software. But we target SMEs because they have limited resources. That's why we have developed this free of charge software for them to use. Second. Enterprises may not be familiar with the procedures of electronic tax return filings, starting from. Twenty twenty three April, we have been offering enterprises. Ways to file their tax returns electronically and we have been talking to various professional bodies and trade practitioners. We have done some workshops. We teach enterprises how to use our software. And our electronic tax returns platform. We have been working on it until twenty twenty three. Hopefully more SMEs will be able to file their tax returns electronically. On individual tax returns. We may not have to enhance the experience of electronic tax filings for individuals. To encourage them to make use of this approach more. So in July this year, we're going to develop a new tax portals. And we're going to also develop a mobile application. I think that people prefer using mobile application to file their taxes. We have also reached out to employers so that they can encourage their new employees to file their tax returns electronically. As to whether we will mandate individuals to file their tax returns electronically, we may consider it, but. Some taxpayers may. Not be able to adapt. So we focus the mandatory requirements on profit taxpayers. Thank you. So that concludes the session. The next session will start at five twenty PM. Thank you.